Heather, will you please take the roll call?
Councilmember Bachman.
Here.
Mayor Beaton.
Here.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Here.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Here.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Here.
City manager.
Here.
City attorney.
Here.
DPW director.
Here.
Finance director.
Here.
Planning and zoning director.
Here.
Police chief.
Here.
Fire chief.
Here.
City engineer.
Here.
Roll call complete.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. This is the time for citizen comments on agenda-related items. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on agenda-related items. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comments limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Do we have anybody that would like to step forward? Seeing none. Consent agenda. All agenda items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to the approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include: approval of minutes, cash balances, revenue and expenses, notification regarding next study session, consideration of the Manistee Lions Club White Cane Days, consideration of ribbons for suicide prevention and awareness. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Please take the roll call.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Unfinished business, we have none. Moving on to new business. Before I get started, I think I should ask for a vote on each of these. Is that correct?
Yes, I think for each.
Consideration of local revenue sharing board grant applications. The local revenue sharing board distributes 2% money from Little Rivers Casino. The deadline for the 2022 Cycle Two applications is Fridays, November 9th, 2022 at 5:00 p.m. City staff has prepared four grant applications for submission to the local revenue sharing board. This agenda item will include four separate motions, one for each grant application. At this time, council could take action to authorize the submission of a grant application to the local revenue sharing board for the fire department in the amount of $5,779 for a SuperVAC PPR fan. Is Chief Cameron here? Do you want to talk a little bit about this?
Yeah, so what this is, is it's another fan that we would use for ventilating a house. This happens to be a battery-powered fan, so we can take it inside. We don't have the carbon monoxide that would be emitted from a gas engine. It would also be used using the existing batteries or similar batteries that we already use for either our Hurst tools or our DeWalt kit. So it's just, it's another, it would be updating an older fan that we had that was, I want to say 12 to 14 years ago that we purchased.
Okay, how many times would you anticipate using the fan?
Well, we use that every time we have a structure fire, or sometimes when we have CO calls, we use that to ventilate out a house. And by, the positive piece with this is if we have CO in the house, we're using mechanical ventilation with battery, we're not injecting more CO into the house.
Okay.
It's a positive piece. It's where most of the departments are heading that way. It seems to be more battery-related items, powered issue, powered items. And so what we're trying to do is focus on batteries or power systems that we currently have in place, so that we reduce turnover of batteries or purchasing mass batteries. We can interchange them, have a little more interoperability.
Fire on Mercury Road the other day, would that stand coming handy for that?
Yeah, any, yes. Any type of fire that we have is, it can be used. It has the same output capacity as, that are existing. It's just, technology is so much different today than it was, you know, a decade ago.
It's like when we used to fight fires and had to carry those damn fans in and pull the electric cord behind you. So that'd be great.
Any other questions?
Might want to stay up there.
I'll stay up there, yeah.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Sure.
Second? Roll call. Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Bachman.
Here.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, let's see. At this time, council could take action to authorize the submission of a grant application to the local revenue sharing board for the fire department in the amount of $3,867.20 for rescue PFDs, ice rescue suits and helmets. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Discussion? How many does that cover?
That'll put in two suits. We currently have four. One of the suits, they're starting, we're just looking at getting two, start rotating out our suits because they're starting to age. Few of them are starting to get small leaks in them. We patch them up, but if we can look at taking two and then spanning them out a couple of years down the road and pick up another two, we'll just kind of keep that rotation. As far as the PFDs, we currently use pretty old, they've been there since I've started, so they're at 20 years. And the PFDs that we're looking at have a quick release cord, so that for operations such as we get into the river channel, if you were to have a tether to it, you can release it and it'll free you up and you can just pop back up like a cork, rather than having the rope pull you down. So it's just upgrades and as well as the buoyancy rating on these PFDs are much higher than the work-rated PFDs that we're currently using. So we're looking at eight of those. Those are used in regular water rescue as well as any type of ice rescue. We have those with the shore crew, so anytime they're near the ice or nearby it or on docks, they have those on.
Where you store that gear?
That gear is stored currently in Rescue Five. We also spread it out somewhat across the pickup truck, Medic Five as well, just so there's a set on each truck, but primarily the gear's on Rescue Five, which is currently our water and ice truck.
Anybody else? Heather, could you please take the roll call?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, council could take action to authorize the submission of an application to the local revenue sharing board for the police department in the amount of $19,183.90 for ballistic shields and rapid response kits. I'll let you talk about that.
Good evening, thank you for consideration. So what we're requesting funding for is essentially two types of ballistic shields and some rapid response equipment. So let's start with the shields. The shields are bulletproof, they can stop rifle rounds. And so what we've seen across the country, unfortunately, especially Uvalde, is, you know, we have an unfortunate situation where we have a killer in a classroom with kids and law enforcement makes the decision to wait because they don't have the tools available to them. And I want to make sure that our officers have the tools in their car available to them, because my expectation is if bad guys in the classroom, we're going in. And if that means hopefully providing them ballistic shields to meet those expectations and give them a little more confidence reaching the door, that's the goal. So there's really two types of shields. One's kind of a 20 by 30 shield the officer can hold as they make entry, and one's a larger shield. And the vision for this is to have a shield in each patrol car as well as a detective car and my vehicle, so that we can rapidly deploy this on scene, have these options available. The go-bag, as I call it, contains trauma medical equipment that officers can grab the back of their car, sling it on, they have extra ammunition, and they have emergency medical supplies right there with them. Not just an active shooter, but any type of critical incident, they have the tools to intervene medically right there on them. I think it really changes our ability to respond and what we can kind of bring initially. And then the third part of the request is extra magazines to put in those kits. So we have, as soon as we grab that kit from the back of our cars, we have extra magazines, we have the medical equipment, and we have ballistic equipment to address the threat. So that's the vision for the grant.
Any other questions? How many of those does this cover?
Seven for the shields plus two of the larger shields, in case that's what's required operation, depending on what we're doing. So it's nine shields overall we're asking for.
And then how many of the kits?
We want a kit for each car. I can look and see exactly how much, but we want to make sure that we have enough. I think it's at least 10 we asked for. Let me double-check that number for you. I think we asked for 10. What's that?
That's 10.
10.
3999 dot 90.
And we found something that was very, very competitively priced.
Medical vests are not ballistic, correct? They go on top of the ballistic vests? Just add, I mean...
The medical is a bag, it's a go-bag.
Or just a bag, okay.
Yeah, yep, it would have tourniquets, medical supplies, extra magazines, you throw it on. Currently, we have medical bags in the cars, that's cumbersome, it doesn't really, I think we can probably provide a little better tools.
Thank you for the pictures and the brand of kit, they're very helpful.
Anybody else? Heather, I think we're ready for roll call.
I didn't have a motion.
Oh, you need a motion.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Okay. Councilmember Bachman.
Here.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Might as well stay up there. At this time, council could take action to authorize submission of a grant application to the local revenue sharing board for the police department in the amount of $12,682 for interview room recording system. I will entertain a motion. How many have motion? Who made the motion? You second?
That's, Mr. Bachman did, but... I'll second.
Mr. Bachman, did you second it?
I either second it or make the motion, either one, I'll take either.
Okay. Your choice, Heather. Okay. Why don't you explain this one?
So this is just the recording equipment in our interview room. Our current equipment is almost 10 years old, starting to get outdated, we're having some issues with it. There is a public act out that drives the need for this, saying that if you interview in custody suspect for specific crimes, you have to have this type of recording system that has time and date stamped and frames per minute. So there is a public act that requires a certain requirement for the system that this covers, but the real drive is our system's about 10 years old, it's getting outdated, technology unfortunately doesn't last that long, so we're looking to replace it. And this system that I've researched and proposing is probably the most consistent what we currently have.
Charles, given that this is required, what's your backup plan if this isn't funded?
This interview recording system's actually planned in our capital improvement, I think in '24, '25. If it's not approved, I'll have to, during budget time, want to see how likely that is to get that in the next budget, and then probably pivot from there, depending on what that looks like.
And all of a sudden, the minutes, so it's definitely that your current system has been down, has been repaired, or is it...
I'm working with IT right currently to fix it. We have a contingency to use our neighboring agencies if we have those such interviews to conduct.
Does this system, is it video as well as audio?
Yes.
And it's, it's all interconnected though, correct?
Yes, it is. It's a pretty impressive system, the technology nowadays, the sound quality, the picture quality. It's a good system that meets our needs, so...
And when I used it a few years ago, it needed updating, so we need it now.
And what's nice about this system is I've got to see it hands-on. The CAC in Manistee County uses the same exact system, the tribal police department has just purchased this, so you actually get to see it, touch it, feel it, and use it. And for two years now, I've kind of been planning this to see at the conventions, what's the next system going to be, does it meet our needs? So I was, I felt very fortunate to be able to actually put my hands on the system to see...
Where does this store the data?
On a hard drive physically on the computer. There's no cloud or anything like that, it's on the actual hard drive there.
In the department? And it tamper resistant or proof, or how does that work?
No one has access to it except for anybody in the police department. So if you have an interview on there that you want to put into evidence physically, it goes into a separate file that no one can rewrite except for our detective sergeant's the only person that...
Go back in and take a piece and delete a section of a confession or an interview or...
No, no.
Can't physically be done?
Correct.
Thank you, I think we're ready for the vote now.
Okay. Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you, thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Consideration of text amendment to the zoning ordinance. This amendment would provide for a built-in two-year termination date for special land use approval with the use or construction, when the use or construction has not commenced. An ordinance, as an ordinance, two separate readings are required. If this ordinance is introduced at this time, it could be adopted at the next regular meeting. At this time, council could take action to introduce zoning ordinance Z-22-04 with proposed text amendments.
I'd like to introduce zoning ordinance Z-22-04 with proposed text amendments.
I'll second.
What drove us to have this two-year termination date? What's the background?
Hello, so the two-year termination date is something that the planning commission has been exercising pretty regularly, from what I understand, the past couple of years. With special use permits, since they run with the land, that's with change of ownership, you do kind of want a termination date built in. When we don't have a termination date set by the planning commission and a use is approved under the current ordinance, someone could hypothetically come back seven years, 10 years later and state that they still have that approval even if whatever construction they had proposed or use they proposed was never commenced within that time. A lot of things can change in that amount of time, so building in the two-year expiration date just makes it so the planning commission does not have to stipulate that as they're practicing.
So if the land is sold within that two-year period, the permit automatically expires, is that correct or not?
Not necessarily. So we do have procedure laid out in our ordinance that outlines transferring of special use permits, so they could transfer the permit within that time as well. We actually had that happen with the Hampton Inn as of recent. It was more so just a formality with their company changing, but it was a change of ownership under the, you know, two-year deadline of their special use permit.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. Roll call.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of authorizing agreement with Civic Plus for select click-fix enhancement. City council and community interest has been expressed for a citizen response management product to provide a convenient way for residents and visitors to report issues that need to be addressed. In addition, these programs allow for tracking and monitoring requests by the city. After exploring several options, city staff recommends C Click Fix, an enhancement provided through Civic Plus, which the city's website, which is the city's website provider. At this time, council could take action to authorize the city manager to accept a proposal for Civic Plus for the C Click Fix service management tool and amend the budget to allocate $5,000 of fund balance to cover this expenditure. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Discussion?
Is that a, is that a one-time fee or is it a...
It's an annual fee, and so currently with the website, we have a report a concern feature, which is kind of a very basic model, but this is, allows for a mobile app, so people can basically report things through their phone, and then also it'll, we'll input all the different service request types, geolocates them, we can print out reports, we can track service completion time, so it's more of a, it's a better, much better version than what we have and more capability. It also links into DPW's iPads, so they'll kind of get them on the road too, so more efficient, just seamless transition right to the, to the person who does the work when we have, so it'll help save some time and things like that. And then there's an escalation involved too.
And isn't there a tracking procedure, so the person who submits a request or can track their request as well?
Correct, and it'll also, it can provide updates when it's closed or if there's, you know, an update about a part being ordered or something like that, so it provides that seamless email back to the resident or visitor.
What's the turnaround time on someone seeing something that's posted? I mean, is there a situation where something might be an emergency and it would be, somebody posts that, and maybe it should go somewhere else, or how do we...
So I wouldn't recommend, this isn't for emergencies, this is for non-emergency items, but for police department, it could be reporting a suspicious drug house or something like that. But for emergency services, you're still going to call 911. But it should be fairly quickly, if not instantaneous, when it goes submitted, then to the iPad, depending on if there's issues with cell signal and things like that.
And how does the system know who to send it to?
So we do have to, we have to build it out.
Well, we got to build it out.
Right. And I've done this in several communities where, so different product but same type of, C Click Fix has actually been around a while, I've done it with Q Alert, which is through Q Send, so similar thing, there's just, I mean, the basic thing is the request types, the escalation, setting the time when it should be completed, and then, yeah, just kind of creating your own custom reports.
What kind of a review process, I mean, it sounds pretty seamless, but isn't there a review process of the complaints or the comments that are being entered in the system?
So, yeah, they're going to come in and, you know, some things, if we provide the service, that's going to be an easy, if it's something that the city doesn't do, that's going to be a response saying, that's not something the city does, but, and then explanation. But yes, I mean, it is, you know, it's going to, you know, requests come in, they have to be reviewed and then responded to.
And again, I didn't see all of the data, but it looked like also where the division chiefs would be able to see everything that would come into there, and you would be able to actually see everything that came in on any given day, correct?
Correct.
And then be able to put input to any of those things that have been submitted.
Correct, yep, and I can run reports on incomplete ones and completed assignments, so it's, it is a good management tool for requests.
Just put it on that standard of complete on it on the top.
So it'll be a numbered, yeah, it'll be a numbered request. And these do take time to build out, but, yeah, I anticipate we'd be working on it the next several months and get it all up and running.
Is the 5,000 part of that build-out cost, where they come in and they assist with that process?
So they offer trainings, so there are, you know, it's kind of a, train the developer of it, but like I said, I've had experience building these out before, so...
Do you think it's going to help?
I think so, yep, and it's good to know what we're spending our time doing. So come budget time, we can talk about how many potholes we filled and things like that.
Yeah, I like the, yeah, being able to track your time, gets the same kind of complaint over and over again.
You don't miss anything, that's, if something doesn't get done or whatever. Thank you for spending the time researching.
Thanks. Yeah, and so when someone calls in too, it can be entered into the system too, so we can make sure that we're tracking all our requests.
Oh, that's good. No more questions? Any more? Okay. I think we're ready for roll call.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of designating a voting delegate for the Michigan Municipal League Annual Meeting. The annual convention for the Michigan Municipal League will be held in Muskegon October 19th to the 21st, 2022. Pursuant to the provisions of the league bylaws, we are requested to designate by action of governing body, one official who will be in attendance at the convention as the official representative to cast the vote of the city of Manistee at the annual meeting, and if possible, to designate one other official to serve as an alternate. At this time, council could take action to appoint a voting delegate and an alternate for the MML Annual Convention. Mr. Campbell, are you going?
I was not planning on it, but could look at it, it's in my schedule.
Ms. Sullivan? Councilmember Sullivan, you're going.
Yes.
And I'm going. Is anybody else going?
I'll make a motion to mayor if he comes out voting down here.
I'll second that.
Well, then I nominate Jermaine Sullivan, Mayor Protem, to be the alternate.
Let's, can we vote on the first?
First, first.
Okay.
First motion first. So this is the motion to appoint Mayor Beaton as the voting delegate.
Councilmember Bachman.
Here.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Restate my motion. I nominate Jermaine Sullivan to be the alternate.
I'll second.
Ready for vote? Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Notices, communications, announcements. A report from the Manistee County Historical Museum and Historic District Commission. A regular part of each council meeting is a report from cooperating agency, organization or department. At this time, Mr. Mark Feder will report on the activities of the Manistee County Historical Museum and respond to any questions the council may have regarding their activities.
All right, back again for another year of talking about the wonderful world of, an exciting world of local history. I usually divide this up into a couple of different topics, briefly talk about the topics, and if you have any questions on those, whether this evening or later on, come down and see[1710.46] evening or later on, come down and see me at the museum and I'll do my best to answer them. Kind of starting out, I'm going to briefly mention the Historic District Commission and what myself and the museum have been doing with that. Katie's going to talk about that a little bit more at length in a couple of minutes. But just a, just a quick refresher on, on what we do at the museum for the Historic District Commission. We, we typically work with potential building owners and business owners and planning and zoning on various aspects of historic buildings, including research on when a building was constructed, who built it, who occupied it. Those are things that new building owners and business owners want to know and the museum in most cases can provide them with that amount of information. Typically, I do this using photographs and maps and newspaper articles and abstract books and all that other fun stuff. That's a lot of fun to dig into and often takes, if you're looking for something specific, you'll go off on a totally different, a totally different topic and five hours later, it's time to go home. But it's always a lot of fun to dig through all that stuff and to really to work with people when they come in and have questions about their, within the district. A couple of projects that we've been active doing this year, of course, the Hampton Inn area is not within the Historic District Commission, but when some of the folks were starting to get to lay the land there earlier, late, late last year, they came to see me at the museum and wanted to know what used to be there and if we had any photographs and so on and so forth. We've also been pretty active earlier this year on the former Redmore Bookstore, which is, which was at one point in time going to be the Music Vault Building and all the, and the history behind that building and what they, what they, the Hotel Northern, of course, has been a, we've had a couple of meetings with the folks who purchased that and are looking into renovating it and restoring it and so on. The Michigan Bell Telephone Company Building at 427 Water Street, the Chippewa Auto Sales Building on the corner of First and Maple, of course, City Hall, this building itself. I had some questions about regarding some of the, some of the roofing and so on earlier this, or late last year. The library, the Manistee Lake area, questions like what kind of mills used to be around there and, and, you know, long story short, that was a fun project. And then, of course, the Bauer Building at 319, 321 River Street. I think Paulette, Paulette Junker, who has the Rudy Blush Art Gallery there, had a lot of questions regarding that and she's going for some, some state historic preservation funds. So we did a lot of work on that. These are just a couple of the things that, that we've been pretty active on over the course of this past year. Moving along, since Katie will talk about that a little bit more at length, moving along, I'll tell you what I've been up to here at the museum. From August 2021 to August 2022, we had 1,681 visitors. That's pretty average. Last year, we had a big, larger amount, of course, because with COVID, everybody wanted to get out of the house and go all over the place. And so we saw a huge uptick in visitors last year. And this year, it's just kind of back to average, but still kind of an active place. We had about 97 researchers. This is, these are people who are coming into Manistee to do research on their families. Believe it or not, people come from all over the country and sometimes all over the world to come to Manistee and to come to the museum, spend a couple of days there with me, lucky them, and get to research their entire family tree and where people, their relatives used to live and where they're buried in the cemetery. And that's people coming into town, spending money at the hotels, spending money at the shops, spending money at the, at the restaurants. A small, a small fraction of people, but still people. And really a lot of fun to meet a lot of those folks and to hear their family stories. And so that's always a lot of fun. We did, we did exhibit this past summer on scrapbooks. We found a bunch of old scrapbooks in our basement that were kind of stashed away and we were able to set them and display them out so people could peruse them themselves wearing archival gloves, of course. And so we had a really good time of people discovering those cool, cool photos and newspaper articles and all this other cool stuff. So that's been a lot of fun. I gave several lectures throughout the community. This was, included people, I did a lecture at the library, the Junior Clive Club in One Nekoma, helped those wonderful ladies out and discovering the, the history of, of their club and the relation it is to One Nekoma. And of course, the county summit last year, I was there giving another talk about some River Street buildings and so on and so forth. But I gave about, I think about six altogether over the last year. So always a lot of fun. I also had tour group. This could just me taking, be just me taking a picture of a bus on River Street or me standing by a bus on River Street. But it really wasn't, I really did have a tour group. You can contact them if you really want to know. I usually get about two or three of these a year, a summer. And, and I just, I had one this summer in July. They came from Indiana and they wanted to know about, they wanted to know if I could give them a, a bus tour of Manistee and the city itself and talk about a lot of the cool buildings and, and cool lumber barons who used to live here. And, and I did just that. And then we spent an hour at the museum looking around all the artifacts there and explaining a lot of, a lot of cool things about River Street as well. So always a lot of fun to do that with, with tour groups. So always very enjoyable. Also continue to write weekly history articles and compile the daily history column for the News Advocate. Once again, I say this every year, but this is something that my predecessor, Steve Harold, started in 1976. You know, that's 46 years of newspaper articles and a long, long history of Manistee and all of its different aspects, people, places, events. And it's something that we continue to enjoy and it's also, I think, the best way to get the history about our community out there. We also, coming up this, this, this year, we have Museum Week. September 27th, it'll be Genealogy Day. People can come into the museum free of charge and, and do research on their family. We have Manistee and Northeastern Railroad Day on September 20th. And buckle up, September 29th is City Directory Day. So that's going to be a lot of fun. People can figure out who used to live in their house and sometimes who used to die in their house, who died in their house at one point in time. People always are really curious about that, believe it or not. September 30th is Map Day and October 1st is Open House Day. So that's always a fun week. It just kind of gets the, you typically at a slower time of the year, get some people in at the museum, not a ton, but it's just a lot of fun to do and, and chat with people. So, yeah. This is, okay, where am I at here? Okay. All right. We've also been involved in a project at 99 Pine Street. Some of you may know or may not know about the Smith family who were here in Manistee. They were a very well-known, well-regarded, well-regarded African-American family here in Manistee and were, are very well-known throughout the community, continue to be very well-known throughout the community. I've been working with the group from Eastern Michigan University and the professors and graduate students who are looking, who are in the historic preservation program there. This house isn't a very grand house. It isn't as big as a lot of the mansions that we see. It just kind of has its own little corner there, but it's very historic, it's, it's a very historic home in Manistee because of the Smith family. They raised nine children in that house, believe it or not. And it was also kind of a safe haven for African-American people as they would pass through Manistee. James Earl Jones spent time in that house when he was here. Harlem Globetrotters, when they would come to Manistee and do, and do their shows, they were, spent time in that house and a lot of people passing through there would also spend time there. So of course, Ray and Anna Mae Smith are no longer with us. Their children are getting a little up there in age, so they want to leave a legacy behind for not just the community, but also their grandchildren. And so I've been working pretty closely with, with one of their grandchildren who actually lives in Rwanda and we've been in communication back and forth. The last season, architect. And anywho, long story short, in April, the graduate students came here and they came to the museum to do research on the property and how the house was put there and who built it and so on and so forth, just so they could kind of get started on their project at large, which is to preserve the house and preserve the history that's in there. They interviewed family members, surviving siblings that are still there or that are still here with us. And I, their long-term plans are to hope to make it into a museum of sorts and kind of an artist retreat. So, so people, so their legacy will be left alive in the community. So that's been a really fascinating and fun project to work on over the last year. Kind of moving forward with our Historic Walking Tour booklet. Did any of you receive the new Historic Walking Tour booklet at all? If anybody, okay, I got copies right here, so.
This is. Thank you.
This was, this is the, in the last several years, this is the third walking tour booklet that the museum has worked on in conjunction with the Visitor Center. And this is a very comprehensive guidebook, almost 150 pages long. Brandon Jensen of Right Side Design Group was here back in March and he spoke about the Origins Walk, which I will mention very briefly in a couple of minutes. But he, he and I are the ones who kind of put our minds together to come up with the Historic Sites book. This is also a project that is in conjunction, not just with the museum and Right Side Design and the Visitor Center, but also with the Little River Band of Auto Indians. They played a huge role in telling the origins of our community, not when the European settlement came here, but when they, they arrived and, and what, and what they did for our community. And that's not always a story that's always told or told right. So the Visitor Center and Right Side Design worked with J. Sam of the Little River Band and also Glenn Zierin, who's here today. And Glenn wrote the content for this book and did a phenomenal job with it. And we are very pleased with how it turned out. So when you're kind of going through this book, I'll just show you a couple of highlights here. Of course, the cover, of course, the story in the front section of the indigenous people of this region and the importance of their history to the community. Also, different walking tours of River Street, which I think includes maybe 41 different sites. And then, of course, East Homes, East Residences in the history of, of that vicinity. There's also sidebars that tell stories about the people who first lived in those homes. Of course, historic churches. And there's also destination sites that go out in the county. And then a section briefly about all the mills that were here, here in the mill community section. And of course, the importance of all of our museums and history centers here within the county, the Manistee County Historic Museum, but also, of course, the Little River Band of Auto Indians and their cultural corridor and the importance that plays within the community as well. Now, there are also kind of these cool things that we decided to put together of kind of then and now pictures that you can take. You can go to this site, which is located right along First Street, kind of where the bench is there overlooking the, the harbor. And you can scan the QR code with your phone and it'll take you to wherever you are. It'll lead you to those exact GPS coordinates so you can snap a picture of what it looks like today. So that's kind of scattered throughout the book. So it was about a year in the making. We all kind of put our heads together and this is a result and it's hot off the press. So we're very pleased with it. And we'll hope to distribute this in the community within the month, later in the month and into October. Once again, this was done through a USDA grant through the Visitor Center and these will be handed out free to the public and is, I think, a wonderful display of our community and the history we have here. Just briefly to go, to go along with that, Brandon Jensen, back, I think back in March, spoke about the Origins Walk and that's going to have an October dedication here, weather permitting, of course. But he, he went on and talked about where that's going to be located, right off the River Walk and the sculptures that are going to be there and the plaques. That, that will be a mix of prominent, prominent influential people here in Manistee that, that arrived after the European settlement, but also the indigenous people that were here too. And talk about the, the different folks who were involved early on and kind of explain so they can be, so it's a, so they are a part of the community as well. And we wanted to definitely highlight their wonderful history here. So this will hopefully, like I said, put in, be in place by, the plan is by the middle of October. And also, this is the, the second portion of this overall project, which we are very happy and pleased with. The Water Works Building. All right. This is what everybody wants to know about. 2000, 2000, or of course, October of last year, we sent a letter to Ed and, and Bill describing the museum's, the museum's idea of vacating the building. We have a historic architect on our Board of Directors. She was born and raised in Manistee. She actually lives in New York City and she did a study, she came home one last summer and did a study of the Water Works Forest because we've tried to figure out exactly what the future of that building holds with our organization. And she, of course, discovered several things that needed to be fixed in that building. There's some foundational issues, some structural issues. Of course, there's no heating, no cooling, no plumbing, anything like that. And took us a while to get there, but we came to the conclusion, the Board of Directors at the museum, to vacate the building. Now, there's a lot of stuff inside of there and of course, that's, that's been a really, I shouldn't say fun process, but a really interesting one. And we're about two-thirds done with moving out. We have several days planned here in September and October to start moving, to move the rest of the items out. Most of that has been going, going to different storage facilities. Small portion has gone to the River Street Museum. And then we've been working with other area museums, either loaning out items on a long-term loan or in some cases donating them directly to those organizations so they could still be put on display within Manistee County and a couple portions of the, of the area, Mason and Lake County as well. So we're about two-thirds out. We hope to be done by November 1st with most of everything out of the building. And, and we, it was a tough decision to do since, especially since the museum's been a tenant of that building since 1954, but we thought it was the best thing moving forward, looking at the future of our organization. On, on a, on a very small personal note, you know, being born and raised here and going in that building when I was a child and of course, working there and being around there, I hope that council, whoever it's made up of at the time, gives a lot of consideration for the right business or person to take over that building. Because I think the last thing, none of us want some fly-by-night who's going to open up like a Long John Silver's or something in that, in that location. We don't want to see that and we don't want to see it, we don't want to see it, you know, just be torn down or anything of the sort. So we hope that it can be preserved. It's 140 years old this year. And we hope that it will continue to be a part of this community and, and there'll be new life inside. So that's my personal note. The North Pierhead Lighthouse. We did our biannual report for the National Park Service and we have our costs for the interior, which are now at about $80,000. A lot of that's because construction costs have gone up. We have about $30,000 in, in the, in the hopper. Of course, 80,000 isn't a huge amount of money, but in speaking with our contact for the National, from the National Park Service, she did provide me with several more grant opportunities that are available and will be available in 2023. And so hopefully with all of that, we'll be able to fix up the interior of it and possibly have it at least be open a little bit to the public so they can kind of at least take a little bit of a look around, maybe not a full look around to the top, but at least a little bit of a look around. So we're kind of in the process of, of getting all the grant paperwork and everything else available for that. With all that said, are there any questions of me going through, running through this at a very brief pace?
I don't have any questions, but I, I worked with the buyers on a couple of your properties that you listed and they couldn't say any, I mean, they had nothing but nice things to say about you and Katie, like.
That's nice to hear.
The knowledge that you guys have on like everything, they were just blown away by and they're like excited to get their projects up and going.
This year, more than any other year, I've been with the museum for about 14 years and this year, more than any other year, there's been a lot more, there's been a lot, of course, a lot more people coming into Manistee and buying residences here, but a lot more history, history-minded people. People want to know right away, just bought this house. I want to know the history about it. You tell me who lived there, you know? And so, you know, nine times out of 10, we can get it and other times, oh, well, you know, this is approximate. But, but this year, more than any other year, it seems I've been inundated with a lot of.
Yeah, I've given out your phone number.
Yes, yeah, yeah. You might have, but, but seriously though, I mean, there's been a lot more history, might, seems to be a lot more history-minded people.
Yes, they, they have been very impressed with both of you guys, like your guys.
That's nice to hear. I'm glad, I'm glad to hear that.
Very impressed.
Glad to hear that. All right. If there are no more questions, I will sit down and let Katie come up. Thanks.
Thank you. At this time, Ms. Katie Milk will report on the activities of the Historic District Commission and respond to any questions the council may have regarding activity.
Hello, everyone. Yes. So as your zoning administrator, I am also kind of staff to the Historic District Commission. So this will just be a brief presentation on what that commission does and some of the permits that have been issued in the past year. I guess I should say all of the permits that have been issued in the past year. So what is the HGC? The Historic District Commission is obviously charged with overseeing the city's historic district. And having a historic district requires a commission to oversee it. And this is dictated by the Local Historic Districts Act. And it outlines the statutory requirements for creating a historic district and establishing and maintaining the commission that oversees it. What is the purpose of the HGC? So I feel like I do get this question a lot. The establishment of a historic district allows for the property owners with contributing properties to apply for tax credits. And then there is also grant opportunities through Chippewa, which is the State Historic Preservation Office of Michigan. As Mark mentioned, I'm currently aware of one property at 319, 321. And then also a property at 100 Washington, who are both. And then, also, a property at 100 Washington, who are both hoping to receive a facade grant from SHPO. So it's always nice to hear about, you know, some of the properties utilizing those opportunities. And then, the bottom two bullets that you see there, that is information that was pulled from a study funded by the Michigan State Housing Development Authority and SHPO. And they utilized assessor data from four communities in Michigan over three time periods to reveal how local historic district designation affects property values in residential neighborhoods. And through that study, they found that they contribute to economic vitality, sense of place, and connection to the past, as well as increasing property values within those historic districts. So for tax credits, going through the couple of opportunities there are with that, there's opportunities for state tax credits as well as federal tax credits. The state credit is available to income-producing properties as well as private residences and is coordinated through SHPO. There is a limited amount of state tax credits available in each calendar year. And I believe this year's allotment is spent, but obviously, that will replenish next year. And they are awarded on a first-come, first-served basis. And then, for our federal tax credits, these are through the National Park Service and the International Revenue Service, IRS. And they're still applied for through SHPO, so through the state office. And a little bit of information on the federal tax credits. The amount available has to be equal to 20% of the qualifying expenses of the rehabilitation. This one is only available to properties that are used for a business or other income-producing purposes. And a substantial amount of the funds must be spent rehabilitating the historic building. It has to be certified as a historic structure by the National Park Service. And the work has to meet the standard, the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation as determined by the National Park Service. And I will say those standards are what our historic district and historic district commissions across the US utilize for making their determinations on approving permits within our historic district. And then, they also utilize Mark Federer and all of his knowledge very much to, you know, make sure it's fitting for our community specifically as well. The map you see up on the screen is showing our historic district here in Manistee. You see the contributing properties identified as shaded black. And then, we do have some non-contributing properties that are kind of within the boundaries of the historic district. This district was established in 1982. And it was revisited in 2007 and 2018 to determine if any properties should be removed or added or the boundary should be potentially adjusted. And it was determined in both 2007 and 2018 that the historic district should remain as is. And who is on the HGC? So the text on the left is some language pulled directly from the Local Historic Districts Act, which governs your HGC. And it's that membership consists of not more than seven, or not less than seven or more than nine members for a local unit having a population of more than 5,000. Our community utilizes a seven-member board. And a majority of those members must clearly demonstrate interest in or knowledge of historic preservation. So you'll see on the right, this is our seven-member board. And Angie Quinn is a new member. I actually have yet to meet her. She will be at her first HGC meeting tomorrow, so that is exciting. And so now, we'll jump into permit review. I kind of picked up where the annual report had left off last year, and it happened to line up perfectly for August to August. So going through these, we have 310 River Street, which is the Bluefish. This permit was just for general facade, you know, maintenance improvements. I think they may have done some painting. But that is a completed picture of the work. 457 River Street, we have a sign for downtown delights. And you will see that this year happened to be a lot of signage permits. We have 375 River Street, and it's the P&amp;L Sandwiches sign, the graphic sign on the window there. The purple paintbrush, another graphic window sign. And although these may seem significant, you know, graphic window signs, it is important and definitely can be a big difference, you know, with the character of downtown. So that's why we do send, you know, every sign through the HGC for approval. There are some here and there that Mark will approve administratively, but most of the signs will go through the HGC. 440 River Street, we have Fracano's. This was a complete facade overhaul, new sign. I know that the garage door on the building was something that the HGC pushed for, something that was a little bit more fitting to our historic downtown. I think that the building turned out great. It looks really awesome and is fitting for downtown in Manistee. 433 River Street, we had some signs, put up a projecting sign, some more window graphic signs. 354 River Street, more signs. I do really enjoy that Emporium sign. I think that one's a cool one. 369 River Street, he had a couple permits pulled for facade improvements, painting the building. Generally, I think it is done, but there's some finishing touches that need to be done. And then, they also had a projecting sign here. 95 Maple Street, the library, they had some maintenance improvements to do. And I'm not sure that those are complete yet, but that involved updating the stairs, doing some tuck point and brickwork and things to that effect. 429 River Street, another sign here. And this is 321 River Street, 319, 321. This has been applied for but is not underway. This is the property that both Mark and I referenced that are hoping to receive a facade grant from SHPO. And they, yes, they worked very hard to, you know, come up with a plan that was going to bring this building back to its, you know, most accurate as possible historical character. This is 432 River Street, the Elks Club. And they are actually going for a digital sign on their message board. This is one that, their justification was that it was becoming increasingly hard to maintain and change. It was becoming a little bit of a hazard with getting people up there. So it is to remain, for the most part, you know, a static sign. But then, they'll have the ability to put messages up there without sending someone on a ladder. And I know they work a lot off volunteers and such, so. And then, 100 Washington Street. This is the conceptual plan that was approved by the HGC last month. They are also hoping to receive a grant from SHPO. Again, I think that this property owner did a great job of, you know, striving to really return that building back to its historical character. And I think that will be a great improvement and extension to our downtown. And that is all I have for you. Is there any questions?
One, how about the mural program?
Yes. I know that the HGC did work on the guidelines for the murals. I have not received any, you know, inquiries on murals. I know, actually, Mark Miller, the Economic Development Director, he did let me know that there was a potential artist willing to do some pro bono work if someone, or, you know, some free work if someone was going to give the space for it and provide the materials and such. I know that, you know, the paint for these historic buildings has to be particular. Things can get quite costly. So that's the only, you know, questions that I've got on it. I actually haven't had any, you know, real push or desire for murals. But I think that, you know, it would be a great addition to downtown.
These are both nice, good, uplifting reports. Thank you.
Yeah.
Katie, what about this building right down here, the old Larsen Insurance Building?
Which one is it?
Right down here, it's by the parking lot from the alcohol store, right next to the parking lot.
Oh, to the, to the left if you're looking down that way? Okay. I am unsure about that one. I don't, I'm not sure if there's any permits in place or not. I can look into that and get back to you if there's any activity on it.
No more questions? Well, you did an excellent job. Thank you much for the update. Citizens comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comments limited to five minutes. Letter submitted to council will not be publicly read. Seeing no one, we will move on to... Mr. Campbell, you have any good news?
I do. We did get notice today that we received the EDA grant for $850,000 for a $1.09 million Riverwalk project. So we're going to get that on the South Riverwalk. So I just wanted to thank, I think Spicer did a lot of work on that. Jeff McCula, Mark Miller also contributed. And I remember coming in on a Good Friday to work on that. So it's kind of nice for more information when they need it. So it was nice to see that announced today by the governor. So we'll have to do a competitive award for the design firm. Spicer's not eligible for that, so we'll have to do that. And then, it'll be, it is a federal grant, so there's a lot of, there's Davis Bacon required. So there's a lot of, a lot of steps to go through, but it's good news. We'll be getting stormwater improvements on the Riverwalk, new PVC deckboard, new lighting, poles, the railings. Also, historic and cultural displays, so I think your Riverwalk, the QR codes will come in handy to show historic ears. So, and it kind of ties in with that Founder's Walk. So exciting stuff. ADA access as well. So more to come, but yeah, some good news today. And then, the other item I have is the Quincy Cleveland Project. We're going to be hosting a project meeting with the public on the street. It's going to take place here the week of September 19th, to kind of go over the plans with everyone, see if they have any questions. So just wanted to give the council an update on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all the hard work you did on that grant. I know that was time-consuming, and I'm so glad it went through. I think, I think it's going to be on the news tonight, too, I would imagine, with the governor's announcement over it.
Hopefully, with the North Riverwalk grant, too, through the MDNR, so a couple more months on that one.
Mr. Salem?
Nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
Nothing, Your Honor. Thank you.
Mr. Redford? Mr. Milton?
Nothing. You're accepting the grant?
If that's so, I bet you are. Mr. McCula?
Nothing, Your Honor. Thank you.
Chief Cameron?
Nothing, Your Honor. Thank you.
Chief Glass?
Just thank you for supporting and rating the petition.
No problem. No problem. I see Glenn Saring here in the crowd. Do you have any updates on the ZBAM that you wanted to tell us about?
Chair of the Senate Board of Appeals. And at this point in the report, we have a full board, and it's operating very nicely, so I'm very proud of it.
Okay, good news. Mr. Bachmann?
You say it like you're nervous about something. I just, I was asked, I was asked to give a shout-out to the fire department for their response on Mercury Road Fire. Apparently, they did extremely well and impacted the saving of that building, and their work was impressive. And what's the flow of this information on the audit? Are we supposed to fill this form out, and we got a couple pieces of paper up here on the...
Oh, you were the one that... That needs to be filled out and turned back to me, please.
To you?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I got. Thank you.
Ms. Hunter?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Ms. Boniek?
I just was wondering about the Koziausco Street House. What's going on with that?
Do you know if we cut the check on that?
Yes, the one that we, I think I got the quick claim deed on that today.
Okay, so, looks like we received it. I'm going to meet with the land bank on Monday, just kind of talk about any collaborations we can have on that.
Do we own it now?
It looks like, you know, we got...
I believe that's what came in the mail today. I glanced quickly. I just opened it. But yeah, the quick claim deed, I believe, came in the mail today.
We probably should mow around there now.
Yeah, I did report that the other day. Yeah, that needs to...
Thanks, Aaron. Mr. Gubowski?
Okay. On the one weekly update, is that we'd get a memo from the PD regarding the light situation at 101. Nothing ever came through on my deal.
I believe I, I can resend it. I thought...
Very good. The next thing is, Chief Cameron, do we need another man at the fire station? I mean, I imagine you could use one.
We'd never return one. No. Yes, we'd always use.
I've heard different rumors about how you could use him. Okay. Next thing is, Jeff, are we going to fill in those holes that, I mean, you patched them last fall? And now, they're kind of, when you come up First Street, hill, you bounce. Come on Eighth Street, and you bounce. Cherry Street, you... I mean, they were falling in.
Right. Council awarded the contract, I believe, in July for that work to Elmer Skreen and Dozer. We're expecting them to be in town this month in September to do all those patches.
Okay, because they're really bouncing around. Then I want to ask Chief Glass. Or, excuse me, the manager can answer this. Are we going to lose two lead men at the city garage? I mean, they've been interviewed by somebody else?
Not that I'm aware of.
I've heard that two guys have been interviewed by other companies. Do you know, Jeff? So, I mean, I hate to see two guys leaving, and I know you've talked to different people at the garage. And they've suggested we give them an incentive raise. I know we're in negotiations with the fire department. And everybody needs money, but they asked about an incentive raise, if they could get $2 even. And I said, I'd bring it up, and, you know, I don't get into negotiation on that, but I'd still bring it up. Because, you know, I mean, we're getting way behind. We know public people don't get as much money as companies and all that, so, yeah, I know anybody could use some money.
I'd like to conclude the fire negotiations before I talk about...
Right. But I mean, you know, the city garage guys are hurting, everybody's hurting for money, of course, at this time of the year with everything going up. It's something we should talk about.
Thank you. Mr. Schmansky?
Well, just first of all, I just want to thank Mr. Federer and the museum itself and all the volunteers there, because it is, it's a remarkable asset that we have. And I include Mr. Federer in that as the asset. You know, again, certainly, Joe Snuffy wouldn't be able to find the information that they're looking for without your capable hand involved in it. And then, also, I'd like to just thank the community for all the support for the very successful Labor Fest we just had last week.
Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
I don't know if anybody, I think council people should have got it. All the different parks and areas that need work done. Kelly did a lot of work and typed up a whole deal of what all is needed. It's going to cost some money if you put in all these parks. But, I mean, we walked down the Riverwalk, and, I mean, there were a lot of trimming that had to be done. There were some benches that aren't in that should be in. We talked to some of the people on the boats, and the lady sent us a letter saying what they would feel. So we need a lot of work in the parks. They really need a lot of updates.
We are meeting with the Parks Commission on, well, some members on Friday about the marina. I know, there's some wishlist items over there.
Right, there's a whole, on every park, Kelly did something on every park. It's pretty interesting, you know, all the things that she could see. And I mean, we would see it too, but we don't recognize it. So it needs a lot of work. Thank you.
I just, I just got a couple of things. I don't know if it's possible, if we can have, I don't know what's on the agenda for the next work session, if we can have Clinton come in from the Housing Commission? Because I got quite a few questions about their last annual meeting and then just questions in general about what's going on. So I don't know if he can come in and address some of those?
Yeah, I'll invite him.
Okay. And then, I just, I got a question for, I believe it's probably Katie. I just, I'm just wondering if there's an Oprah on the building and if the current owner hasn't done anything with it, does it pass if that building sells? owner hasn't done anything with it, does it pass if that building sells?
I actually do not facilitate anything with the Oprahs. So, yeah, I unfortunately can't answer that question for you, but I believe that maybe Molly or Mark Miller would be able to. Yeah, I'd call somebody.
We can, I can follow up.
Okay. I'm just wondering if it, if that's something that passes with the new owner? And then, I don't know, I know nothing about deer, except that there is a ton of deer in the city, so I don't know if it's, like, if, like, if there's a certain time that you can bring up, like, having a deer call. I don't know, there's like a certain time of year that you do that?
It's called hunting season.
Well, yeah, I know it's hunting season, but, I mean, you can't let, I don't know if that's something that we can bring up again?
I'll talk to staff, I'm not, gee, I haven't, I haven't organized one in other cities, so I, I'm not aware, but I'll talk with staff.
Why don't we haven't done one in quite a few years, but there's a lot of deer in town, like, a lot.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, we brought one for council, I think, one or two years ago, and USDA did it.
Of course, before, but they increased the price, and we looked at it to see how many deer they actually call versus what it costs, and council decided not to move forward with it, so I can work with the city manager on what that looked like, the history of it, and to see if that's changed at all. I'm going to assume the price is going to be more, I'm just going to make that assumption.
I mean, maybe I'm the only one that's noticing there's more deer, I don't know, but, yeah, it just seems like-
Sure.
But we set the budget for it in the budget this year, if we're going to talk about the deer calls. We do it in November, December, correct?
It's winter time, yeah.
Like, winter time, December, January.
So it'd be November, December next year? We'd have to budget for it.
If not budget this year-
Right.
That doesn't mean you couldn't make an exception if you wanted to, but typically we'd have to write, write bill, we have to roll into the budget.
Have to do a budget amendment.
And take it on here to get that together, right?
Yeah, the way that it's lined up, having the USDA do it, there's a lot of steps you have to put in place to do that, so we would need to, I mean, we can coordinate and probably bring something back.
I've just never, in the 17 years I've lived on that side, had deer, like, at my, literally at my front door, like, it's crazy. They're all, all over the place.
You have to remember, our insurance company don't want us to do it.
Oh, okay.
So we'll look into the process, and we'll get some more information back to the council.
That's all I have.
Okay. I just wanted to recognize the, the efforts of the council on aging. They have worked really hard to try to figure out what to do with their property, and they want to, they want to establish some housing if, if the data supports it, and they have hired a consultant to help them make this decision, and they're going to be conducting some interviews with a bunch of seniors at the, at the Wagner Center, and they're going to put all this data together and hopefully come up with, what do we really see? What, what is our vision for the housing for seniors around that area? I know we approved a pilot a few years back, it was a 4% pilot with a municipal services agreement that we had with it. They're still interested in doing some housing there, but they really need to get the data before they can move ahead and make any decisions on what it should look like. So I'm glad they, they're going to be methodical, and they're taking this step. So I wanted to recognize that their efforts are, are finally moving forward, and I think that's a very good sign for our community. That's all I have. I'll take a motion to adjourn.